We made the solution as part of the
Yeah, we put up, he said, we're putting up a sign that said all that grass we put down didn't take. And I was like, well, no longer because everybody's parking.
Exactly.
And I sent him one back and said, do you not put up some kind of boulders or bigger rocks that would prevent people from driving up there? I may call him. I saw him today driving from town. I may call. I figured if you, I mean, anything like you got to put boulders in the driveway, you can put some bigger rocks.
It's boulders in the right away from here to Frank.
But they'll park right there and then they'll park even on up in the grass.
Oh, yes.
What are y'all talking about? They're still parking up there?
Yes, they always have.
Right in the right of way.
I know, but they built all that parking out there.
That don't mean anything. It's like Walmart. People drive around 10 times trying to get.
The very first?
Yeah.
Start ticking at them. Start ticking them. I'd start ticking. Get your good ear on that side. No, that was Donny. That was Donny. Yeah, you're right there. Well, you see it all the time then, don't you?
Every day. Multiple times. It's been a miracle somebody had gotten kids there. I've seen. We're pulling out because they're parking right there on the street.
So you can't see.
And people pulling out of that.
That depth.
Can't look down past the curb. The friggin' mess one is. Outwards.
Let me call. The work, the workshop meeting scheduled for September the 18th.
That is funny. Somebody just texted me, said it was on for that. He was watching it remotely. That's very strange. Okay. All right. Let me call to order the workshop meeting for September the 18th. We have two commissioners that are not here. Mr. Pearson is out on business. Mr. Weller will be here soon. But since this is a workshop meeting where we're not really taking any formal action, we have been advised we can convene this, this meeting and move forward. The first item would be to review and approve the agenda. We have approval motions. Do you second? All in favors? Okay, we, we have our agenda. Do we need to delay approving the?
The minutes?
Minutes?
Yes, yes.
We'll do that. So we'll just go ahead and start with the discussion, Nick. What we're here tonight for. And let me just lead off with this. And that is that we have on the books, on the ordinance, a book of ordinance that prohibits merchandising and peddling and so forth on the streets of the B1 district. We've been getting feedback, law enforcement, town staff, board members in recent months, that this problem still persists and in some cases it's intensifying. And hearing those concerns, we've decided to have this workshop session where we can look at a new stronger ordinance that has been drafted by our town attorney. I know some people came to my office, shared with me, for example, ordinance from another city. And I forwarded that to the town manager and the town attorney to, to look at that and it's kind of a possible model and so forth. So tonight Nick is here with us and has drafted a new ordinance. And also I've asked Officer McCall to be here from the police department to get the law enforcement perspective on enforcement as we go forward. So Nick, why don't I just turn it over to you and let you go over the ordinance? Then we'll discuss, review and go from there.
All right. Sounds good. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So yeah, we, we, we took a look at the, the current ordinance that, that the town has. It's of course located in your code of ordinances, not your U D O. So we don't have any issues with the, you know, with the legislation. And we took a look at what we could do under North Carolina law to, you know, for lack of a better word, beef up that ordinance that is, I think, very old. I, I think maybe one section was drafted in the nineties, but before that, I think it was a while. And, you know, it's your, your typical peddler, street, you know, interant merchants kind of ordinance. And so what you have before you is our attempt, while we were in it, just like with everything else, we went ahead and cleaned things up a little bit. So it had different sections for, you know, for a peddler and for a solicitor and for a transient vendor. And at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter wh- what the distinctions between those two. Because at the end of the day, it's about, you know, attempting to, you know, sell goods and merchandise and offer the sale, you know, the goods and merchandise. And whether they're temporary or permanent, or, you know, they go from place to place or what have you. It doesn't really matter from a legal perspective. You know, at the end of the day, what it is, is we a- as the town want to ensure that we're having a process in place and very clear rules and regulations as it relates to solicitation. And, and to, to address some of the issues pressing, you know, we did that. Now, you know, the truth is we, we, while we were considering that, we, we were just coming up with a good, you know, code ordinances provision related to solicitation regardless of that. You know, this is, this is something that will help, I think, the town in other situations that may come up. Maybe it's not these specific, you know, solicitation companies. It may be different companies or different people that come about. And I think this kind of will ensure that we are, you know, have the enforcement tools in place that we need. So you have it before you. I'm, I'm not going to go through every line. I'm just going to briefly summarize what we did, which is, you know, like I said, we took peddler, solicitor and transient vendor. And we rolled it into one definition of what solicit, solicit means. We also, you know, in, we took what we've seen in other jurisdictions and made a definition for aggressive manner and said that, you know, which the current ordinance doesn't have, that, you know, there's a difference between, you know, soliciting and breaking the rules there. But also it's illegal to solicit in an aggressive manner. And, you know, the, it's pretty self-explanatory, the definition. But I think, you know, for what we're seeing on the ground right now, we've got, we added in there. You, you'll see under aggressive manner definition, number three, that it includes continuing to solicit in close proximity to someone after that person has, you know, made a negative response, either verbally, verbally or with a physical sign. And, you know, attempting to leave. And so, you know, that, that's getting at kind of, you know, what, what can be considered aggressive solicitation. So then the final thing from the definition standpoint, and this is important. The, the police chief asked us to ensure that we could, you know, enforce this against an individual or a, a business, depending on what we want to do, you know? It depends. Sometimes you want to go after the business that's doing the illegal solicitation. But sometimes it's just an LLC and it's a shell and there's no assets to go after. And you want to, you want to hit the individual with, with the civil penalty. So this adding in that the definition of person is either the individual or the corporation is a very common thing to do in ordinances and it gives that flexibility. Go ahead.
Yeah, let, let me just start off and ask you a question, Nick, with this draft ordinance. You know, I've gotten feedback from a number of citizens and other merchants who are saying this, this practice of standing in a doorway or on the property, calling out to people, come over here and I'm going to give you a sample and all this stuff, that it, it doesn't help their business in that people want to try to avoid that area. And a lot of the citizens are saying, you know, the tradition in Highlands has been that we, and people walk down the sidewalk, they can look in windows, displays and so forth. And then if they'd like, they can go into, you know, a store. Would this ordinance prevent people from being shouted at, saying, hey, come, come see my, you know, my free sample or whatever?
I mean, the short answer is no, we, we, we cannot stop somebody from shouting, you know, hey, come into my store. I mean, we, 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 no. We tried to draft aggressive manner as loosely as we can, that it's, you know, we, we can't say that somebody who just says, hey, come into my store is, that's an aggressive solicitor, you know? And so I, I think we, we try to do the best we can, that if somebody's like, no, thank you. And they're like, no, 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 come on, I promise you. Then, you know, then it's, it's clear that that person has violated the ordinance.
And this does stop the, a store person with samples walking out on the sidewalk and engaging.
That's correct. Yes. I was going to get there, but I mean, I can go ahead and, and jump to that. You, you see, the definition of solicit means that, you know, again, this is like wrapping everything up together. You know, so that it's all one. It's either temporary or a permanent business that is selling, soliciting, taking orders, attempting to take orders, offering for sale or distributing free samples in an attempt to sell goods, wares or merchandise to someone located on public property. And that, that would let us get at that situation where even though they're on private property, if they're doing it to someone located on public property, it's a, it's a violation of the ordinance. And so that, that is meant to be, you know, addressing that point. So I can go into the enforcement section of the several counties. If there's no questions, no further questions about the definitions, or does anybody want to talk about the definitions some more?
Go ahead. Is hawking a legal term?
I, I'm sorry. Was somebody talking? I can't hear.
Is hawking a legal term?
No, I don't, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't, depends on what you mean by legal term. So the, the statute that gives us the authority to do this not define any of these terms. Okay, there's not a definition section for that. It just says, it has a list of things that are, are, you know, that are being done, including solicitation and peddling and, you know, that type of thing. But it doesn't, it doesn't define that. Is there, is there a specific, I don't know who's talking off, off the mic, but is there a specific thing of hawking that, that is not included in this definition that we want?
Well, Mike, is this on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For instance, if you had a person selling peanuts, popcorn and candied apples within a store, would it be appropriate for them to be on the street yelling this up one side of the street and down the other? Could that, could you have an ordinance against that? And that's kind of what I call hawking. It's the same repetitive spiel loud that would be disrupt, that might in fact be disruptive to other businesses who conducted their businesses in a, shall we, shall we say, quiet manner? The, I mean, finally, do we turn this into a midway on Main Street?
Yeah, I mean, you know, all, I, I, I don't, all I can say is that the, the statute that gives us this authority talks about it in terms of, you know, we have the ability to regulate, restrict, prohibit solicitation. And that is kind of, so, so hawking is not really something that I'm aware of, that we've got authority to regulate or restrict. And again, like I mentioned in response to the mayor's questions, if, if what we're trying to get is people on their own private property yelling, hey, come into my store, come into my store, you know, that's permissible, you know, we can't, we can't stop somebody from on their own property, asking people to come into their store. That's just not, you know, that's not what the, the, the ordinance is meant to get at. Now, what we can do is if they are on public property and somebody is saying, you're trying to solicit them, you know, that is something that this ordinance would regulate. But just ra- raising their voice, I mean, if that's what I'm understanding, raising their voice and saying, you know, kind of in a, a hawking manner, that, that's not something that we can really regulate.
Nick, if a person is standing in an open area, not in a, not in a door well, doorway, standing in an open area immediately adjacent, that it's private, but it's immediately adjacent to public property. It doesn't seem that this new ordinance is, as long as they don't intrude upon the public property, this new ordinance would not have any effect.
Right. Yes. Yeah. We cannot control what, you know, what people do as it relates to transactions on private property. That's not within our purview. We, we can control what happens on public property, but we can't control what happens on private property.
And Buzz, I think an example of that is we have some stores that have little recess.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
And they have, they have like dresses there or whatever. If somebody wants to come up and look at those and the vendor comes out and talks to them, it's within their property. It's kind of a fine line. If someone would have, let's say cosmetics and they're on their property, if a potential customer steps over the threshold onto their property, then how do you, you can't stop them from engaging in a discussion themselves. Other side is if they step out trying to give it on a sample or something, that becomes a violation.
Right. Because there's not, I mean, just thinking, there's not a big difference between them being on that property and being inside the store, right? It's private property. And so just because there's no walls, you know, on that section doesn't mean that, you know, they should be prohibited from trying to sell people things. We, we, we have jurisdiction over, over public property and we want to make sure on sidewalks and roads and streets and parks that people aren't being solicited.
So my question is, if it's done on a private property, even though it may be the case that this private property outside of the lease shop or a space is not the tenant's property, yet they still occupy that property that's not in the lease. So basically their square footage of the lease space of that walkaway is not theirs. So they occupy somebody else's private property and solicit onto the public walkaway. So technically, they won't stand out to the public walkway, but they stand right at the edge. Their bodies, their hands are onto public walkaway. So they solicit onto the public walkaway. And that property, I think it should be researched and verified, does it belong to the tenant? And if it doesn't, what consequences would that have? So that's one. Two, we all know that other towns across the country change their ordinances as it relates to solicitation onto public walkaways with, let's say, free samples to get people inside to their store. There is, there are a couple of things. One, public nuisance. The number of complaints that we've seen and heard and read and witnessed personally by being an adjacent business to one of those businesses, I can't even begin to tell you of what is, what is happening, the energy, the vibe, the comments and the fights that happen on daily basis. The police is being used as a resource for numbers of phone calls because of what's happening due to, as a consequence of that solicitation of pedestrians. And two, I see it as a safety hazard because when somebody's being told, no, thank you, the conversation just doesn't end there. People keep on walking, turning and trying to have a conversation with, but no, thanks, I already have it. Or I got it, or I don't need it. Somebody will get hurt. And so that's another point. Some towns, what they did, like Aspen, Colorado, with a similar business of solicitators, began, changed their ordinance and began requesting permit to be able to solicit with free, solicit public with free samples. So what happens now, the town has an ordinance against solicitation yet because there is that indentation and the private walkaway between the door and the sidewalk. Nothing would change with what I hear. People would still be able to stand on their private property, whether it's theirs or not. And they will still talk and disturb and, um, talk to everybody. My business suffers, committee. My business suffers because when people walk by, they're being approached, their attention span immediately goes to the person who talks to them. Hi, aloha. Hello Barbie, to an 80-year-old woman. Let me give you for the eye. Do you know what it is? It just doesn't end. And as a business owner next door who is selling fine art, I'm not able to succeed. There is so much annoyance and anger and I deal with the victims. I will call them victims at this time when the transaction occurs, when they're being, you know, manipulated, and that's a different issue, understand? They come into my gallery the day after or so. So the situation is much deeper than just that fact of solicitation, at least in my, in our case. Thank you.
Let me respond to the permitting and correct me if I'm wrong, Nick. That would be a difficult challenge in the, the North Carolina legislature. I guess about 10 years ago, even prohibited the town from requiring business permits of, of merchants. We no longer have those.
Right. The privilege, business privilege license.
It's called.
I have something to add. I'm from Aspen where this was ended. And my partner's from Sedona where this was ended and Banner Elk, North Carolina ended it. And Charleston ended it. And Charlotte ended it. So there has to be enough examples in the state of North Carolina and neighboring areas to figure it out. But you made a statement at the beginning that somebody could not disturb the peace into the public sector from private property. And then came back behind it and said, but if they're standing on private property, they can yell at people to come in all they want. So that's two different points of view of the same idea. The original idea is, is you can't bother somebody walking on public property. And the second idea is you can say anything you want to the person on public property. That has to be decided.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify, because I don't think I said that. What, what I was saying is, right now, the way the ordinance, the way I drafted it, is that somebody standing on private property cannot solicit or give free samples or hawk or, you know, do any type of action that we've defined now to somebody located on public property from their doorway or from their, they can't do it.
That's what I heard you say.
Right. So that's.
After that, you said that they could yell out in the street, hey, come in, and that you couldn't stop that. So which one is it?
What I'm saying is you will not be able to cite them for an ordinance violation if both parties are on private property, right? Because that is just as if somebody is in a store or in the backyard of a, you know, back patio area of a store or what have you. And you can't say, well, you're not allowed to solicit on your private property for those things.
Well, we're in agreement with that, sir. Now it's up to the landlords to decide how much of the property do the people rent. So if the people who are doing this solicitation, and there are at least two landlords of solicitors in town, if they decide that the doorway inward is what they rent and the doorway outward, they don't rent, like they don't rent the sidewalk area that you walk up to their front door, then that will bring them back inside. And then they can only talk at their door, but they can't even talk at their door to people on that little section of dirt that's not public, but it's not their property either. It's the private property of the landlord, which will shut them up shouting in front of the art gallery. That would help immensely. Now they can only, if someone walks up to the door and folks their nose in, they can say hello. And then when the person steps inside the door, they can talk to them as much as they want, which we have no problem with. So if the landlords decide that they control the outside area as their own private property, not part of the rental property, that changes everything. And if they can't speak out onto public property, that changes everything. And this meeting can adjourn right now. But if that doesn't happen, and I was told by a police officer that they've issued four nuisance tickets for $250 apiece, they pay them and they go right back to shouting down the street. Now today alone, if I'd have recorded for two hours this afternoon, there wouldn't be a person in the room who isn't nauseous from the crap that went down this afternoon. Then the people who are spoken to long after the first no, like by the fifth no, that went on at least 10 times this afternoon, and it becomes, it becomes a circus. And what Beata alluded to before, since we started on July 2nd to today, I have personally observed somewhere in the neighborhood of 2,000 to 3,000 people who were looking at the window that were pushed off the window from the people next door, shouting at them that they needed to run away from or turn and look towards, that have cost me those 2,000 to 3,000 people, if somebody had said, oh, let's go in here, they don't feel comfortable doing it. And the other night at the Bascom, I ran into three of my best customers. And I said, how come you haven't come to the new gallery? And they say, we refuse to go to Main Street and we live in Highlands. We weren't going to Main Street while those people are there doing that. I said, I have some beautiful art you'd love. And they said, well, maybe after 6 o'clock we'll sneak in. But we're not coming there anytime, any other time. We have people that are making loops through the middle of the street to avoid both sides of the street. They're walking down between cars and popping out. Somebody's getting killed. Sooner or later, somebody's getting killed just from doing the avoid dance, trying to get away from them on both sides of the street and dance into Rosenthal's and then get out. And oh, wait, we forgot something at Town Square. So they go back out into the street, down the middle again to come back into Town Square. Somebody's getting killed. But I have a long list of notes and I don't want to hog the thing. I can send them to you. But I'm happy to read some of them into the notes that I think are important. But I'll stop right there since this is the part we're on and find out if we can at least get them to have to go to their doorway and only speak to people once they step inside their property. This would go a long ways to changing downtown.
I'm just going to stand up because I feel better talking when I stand up. It seems like we're at this position of free speech versus impact. And, and finally, it kind of boils down to that age-old question, is it illegal to call out fire in a crowded theater? And I really kind of think that that's kind of what this is boiling down to. And I appreciate your point about reaching a place where, you know, this, things need to be worked out. But I think that this is, this is that, that instance, you know, what, what, are you looking at the impact of what, how this affects people? Or are you looking at the free speech rights of the, the person that's in the building, the tenant? And I think that's what's crucial to look at, is to look at the impact this is having. It's impacting, you know, my, my tenants, I say my tenants, there are five owners here. It's impacting us, it's impacting them, it's impacting the town, it's impacting basically, it could be construed as impacting every retail merchant on the street, because people are not coming to town. If they live here in town, they don't want to be bothered with it. They just, they would just as soon sit on their porch and go out to dinner at night and that's about it. So, and they're, and they're, I can't speak to the percentage of people that's happening with, but it's happening. And things are tough in town already, because, you know, their, their economic situation is making it tough. So anyway, that's, that's what I'd like to see thrown into the equation, is the impact that this is having.
Hi, Joanna Fine, the executive director of the Highlands Chamber of Commerce. And thank you, town commissioners, for looking at this and, and trying to make an improvement over what is happening. And I have, you know, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to Josh. We all understand there are some serious issues. I took some emails. We get at least a phone call or an email every week from visitors and residents that are accosted by these people. I'm happy to leave these with y'all to look through. But if I could just take one minute to read some of these comments, you know, these places reflect badly on our wonderful town. That's from a resident. And that's the truth. Here's another resident saying, I would like to see someone in local government proactively take the state steps to initiate a city ordinance that stops the solicitation and enforces the ordinance with fines so they are financially punished. And I can keep going on. This salon is bad for Bain Street. I have visitors that were married here and visit year after year, who have said they're embarrassed to bring people here with them because they're accosted on Main Street by these people. And again, I'll, I'll leave these with you. We're not even talking about the fraud that occurs once people go in that. I have receipts from people. I have people that have arrived at the chamber in tears to explain the incidents they've come into. I won't go into that. I think we all are aware of what, what happens once they get in those stores. But I, again, I will leave this, there are pages and pages of emails about people's opinion of our town.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
You used the term fraud, though.
Yeah.
And the implication is that we're willing to let fraud take, take place.
Understood.
And I'll be happy to let you talk how the police officer, what they're doing does not constitute a prosecutorial act of fraud. It, it might be bad business practice. It might even be deceptive, but it is not a fraudulent thing because Officer McCall, would you just go watch all investigations? And what happens?
So most of, is it on?
Yeah, you just gotta pull closer.
Closer. Okay. Most of the calls that we get, a lot of them are after the fact, you know, a couple of days later, especially if they're talking about people being grabbed or something like that. We're not able to do anything about it. Now, what you said about fraud, we have not been able to, to charge with that, because basically what's happening is they go in, they have the, the high-pressure sales technique. And once a person signs the credit receipt, it's done. And basically what's happening is they're not checking that receipt. So most of these people are signing tickets where they thought they were buying something, I don't know, just say $600. And then they get the bill and it's $15,000, $30,000. They're huge amounts, but they haven't read their receipt. So the credit card companies will not reimburse their money because they have signed on the dotted line.
Thank you. Yes, and I know and I understand. I have a big skincare company in Connecticut, so I have a lot to say not at this time. True, I dealt with a widow who was coming to Highlands for years. She lost her husband. She came to mourn. And she was pulled in, she came in Saturday morning when they're closed. I actually refused to be there. Steve is there most of the time because I cannot fathom of what's happening next to me and in the middle of our beautiful Main Street. I spent about four hours with this woman. And she went to the police filed report and she understood that $13,000 was lost. She signed for that receipt. She knew she was signing for $13,000. Now, the point is, if we stop the luring, the solicitation from public sidewalk onto the store, people like Donna would not walk in there. Why? She wasn't looking for skincare. She wasn't looking to spend $13,000, $10,700 on LED device that, she, she wouldn't buy it, okay? And 70, 80%, maybe 50% of people who spent these ridiculous amounts of money would not do that because that's not what they're here for. She didn't wear any makeup. She didn't, she used regular skincare from Trader Joe's. She understood what she did. She understands that $13,000 is gone. Yet, we as, as town and local government have to prevent at least that part. We understand, no matter what they do, if somebody walks into their store willingly or is approached from the private to private property, that's their business. And they will spend what they will spend. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
I just wanted to add, Beata ran a skincare place for 30 years and I ran one for 30 years, also a different one. And the, the lady brought the device in and she went online to the parent corporation that they list in New Jersey. And an M D there puts his name on the box. And the device is listed as FDA approved. And yet, when you go on the FDA website, it's not approved. So they have perpetuated a fraud. And also, that device is purchasable for $200 or $300 wholesale at a skincare event of distributors. And they have repackaged, they've repackaged a $200 to $300 device for $12,000. And anybody has a right to do that. But at the same time, they are pushing the numbers out so ridiculously far. Now, anybody who knows skincare, and that's probably every lady and half the men, knows that you can get, that Estee Lauder spends about $4.50 for a jar of cream they sell for $350. It just so happens Beata and I had skincare lines that cost us $80 for a jar of cream we charged $120 for. It's just the rest of the billionaires and millionaires in the skincare world make things for pennies on the dollar and sell them for lots of money. So that's common. But the insult that's going on next door to us becomes a street fight. And if it's true, to the, to the town lawyer and all of you all folks, that they can no longer speak out onto public property and that the landlords can say that the people have only rented to the door of their places, so they can't even step out onto that property and hawk, because it's not their private property, it's the landlord's private property. Their private property begins at the doorway. And this can be enforced? A ticket, a speeding ticket isn't going to cut it. It has to be that 250 four times becomes 2,500 four times, that becomes 25,000 four times, that becomes a lock on the door. If that can be done.
We cannot do that.
Okay, I'm just suggesting.
It's $500 per violation.
If all they get is 500 per violation, they'll be out there 10 minutes after the ticket.
I will not dispute that with you, but under North Carolina statute law, because we looked at it, because we are 250, and we were thinking, well, let's move it up to 2,000. But our trial attorney said, no, under the code of North Carolina, the limit for violation is $500.
Okay.
That's correct.
I have a question for you then. If the Youngs, in this instance, one, one side of the street, the Lupolies, the other side of the street, say that the property right in front of the doorway out is their private property, and now they, the tenant can no longer trespass from the inside private property to the outside private property, now they're trespassing. And that's a different crime.
Yeah. And, and, and that would have to be, you know, documented in the lease.
Great. So.
In many, in many cases, when y'all were talking about this, in many cases, when somebody rents a property there, it usually, you know, begins at the sidewalk and going back. So that's something that has to be clarified.
Okay. So can it be clarified retroactive that, because here's the thing, when I rented my space, it was very made clear to me by David Young, who isn't here this evening, that I would be renting from my door jamb back through the place. And the square footage was figured based on my door jamb back. And if indeed their square footage next door to me was figured from their door jamb back, and they've just been casually using the outside, it should be a relative easy conversation to say, hey, you guys only rent from this doorway and you can only use from this doorway. And that would go a long way toward making things change. And as I've said to the neighbor next door, I said, I'd like to be amicable with you, but you're costing us business. Two, 3,000 people have avoided us. I said, I, I mean, I got in a shouting match with them twice. Once Officer McCall came and once not. And after the second time I yelled at them, they calmed down, but they have ramped it up so badly, which you all know. But I will take the notes I have on my phone and rather than bore you with them, there are some possible legalese ideas for you. I'll send them over to you. I'll give them to Officer McCall or Officer Andrea. I'll give them to the mayor and to all y'all and to the Youngs. And we'll see if anything can happen. But if it, if this truly can stop where your voice can't be heard on public property, when it comes to somebody putting dresses or, or furniture or whatever on their private property, when a customer says, oh, I like these chimes, and they walk inside Dutchman's and say, the chime's outside. They walk outside very quietly and go, yes, these are $400. They say, great, they take them down and sell it to them. Same thing at Annie's or anywhere else for a dress or monkeys or whatever. But that's different than, let me, let me, let me do this, let me do that, let me do this, let me do that. Oh, ma'am, aloha, aloha. Take, let me give you the one for the eyes. Let me give you the better one. And you might go, oh, God, shut the hell up. Well, I hear this about 2,000 times a day and louder than I'm doing it for you. And so if you want to be nauseous, just come down, slip in my back door and sit there for two hours and you'll be looking for ways to change it.
Hearing what he just said about from their doorway saying, let me give you this, that, with this proposed ordinance, would that be chargeable?
Yes. If they, if they walk by and say no, give any kind of shaking of the head or whatever, and, and officer sees it or whoever, you know, that, that they are denying that and they're and an officer sees it or whoever, you know, that they are denying that and they're still grabbing at them or yelling at them on public property, yes, that's a violation of this ordinance.
Then I'm asking to be deputized with the right to videotape and photograph and record. And I will give you about 45 to 300 incidents per day and they can be charged $500 apiece.
I got a question for you. Is your landlord the same landlord as the folks? Have you had a discussion with your landlord?
Yes, we have.
Over and over.
I'm not trying to deflect from what we're trying to do.
I know.
But.
We're trying to work with everybody. We don't want to be, we don't want to be bad to anybody. We'd like to continue renting on Main Street, but if it doesn't change, we cannot because it's costing us a lot. We've made one sale in two and a half months when four doors down at Silver Eagle, he's had the best July and August he's ever had, and we've had the worst because of being next door.
We're missing, we're definitely suffering because of what's happening. I have been asked by so many women to start a petition. People don't understand why this cannot be changed, enforced. Why can't solicitors be put inside? Why can't solicitors be stopped to speak, solicit onto people on whether they're standing on private property? They solicit, so the receiving party is on a public sidewalk, right? So we have no understanding.
Right.
Yes. And just very last, I'll be very, very short. Mayor, I was sitting on the ledge, sunny day, it was very quiet, and I was on the phone with my girlfriend and just talking. Police officers approached me. They were called that I solicited people from a public sidewalk to walk into my gallery. So the strategy, the strategy now has changed where police has been called that I solicited. Not true, anyway.
Police staff have invented a call, but go ahead.
The question to me would be to Captain McCall is, you have to witness it or, I mean, obviously if it's what's happening now, you would have to witness it, otherwise you're, it's he said, she said, or, right? So you have to witness it before you can cite them?
When it comes to this new ordinance, yes, we would need to see it. Or if, in the past, when we've had, I'll give you an example, last week, because we've been trying to make a more of a presence out there, so someone has been walking around keeping an eye on them. I had a woman go into the store, come back out, I heard her say to her friend, I had to tell her to let go of my hand. So I approached her and I asked her what happened and she said she had my hand putting lotion on it and would not let go. And I said, that's assault. Would you come and do a report? And she said, no. Can't do anything without them.
Okay. I'm going to bring up a thorny question, but you know, I know y'all have looked at this. And you've even gotten videos before. If there were cameras on Main Street and you saw a violation on that video camera, could you not make a charge based on video evidence?
Yes, I believe we could.
Cameras on the sidewalk, that's what I was just going to say.
Okay, all right, all right, just a second. Because you then become the charging person. Problem is, if someone says they accosted me on sidewalks, and this is my old magistrate talking, they have to be willing to go to court and say, this is what happened.
Correct.
So one remedy or way of kind of regulating any kind of thing on the sidewalks would be more cameras. Now, we've had this conversation before and we don't have time to discuss it tonight, but that is one, you know, one possibility.
I would like to say before we stop, Chief Holland alone has been looking into this issue since 2018.
Correct.
And we have also contacted the Attorney General.
Correct.
We have given everything to them. We just haven't gotten a response back with regard to the credit cards and everything.
And the business practices.
Yes.
Very good.
But that's a separate issue to me.
Then this.
That's a scam, fraud, whatever you want to talk, we're talking about making, keeping the culture that we've always had and not allowing the, I don't know whose culture it is, I can think. Right. That is a culture that that's the way they sound.
Culture here is death. We need to.
But what I'm saying is we want that in the store, but they come from a culture where that is the way that it is done. And so, and I don't know how we do that other than by passing this ordinance and, but again, that was my question, you actually have to witness it, otherwise you would be charged because it would have been, somebody said it again about you and you're just sitting there talking on your phone. And so, and that way, I don't, you know, I'm not a big fan of Big Brother watching me, but maybe that's.
Big Brother has been watching.
For a long time.
But using it.
I have a question, I'll address Officer McCall first. Is there an ordinance about playing music outside of your establishment?
There is, but it's, now we look at decibels.
You look what?
At the decibel level.
Okay, all right.
Of whatever the noise is.
Okay. So if somebody's standing in the doorway, is that the equivalent of providing music outside their doorway? In other words, does their voice stop at the door? Like the music, does the music stand in the door? Or is it all a function of decibels?
It's all decibels.
What about in tempo?
Okay.
You're speaking there.
Trying to resolve. Yeah. But, and let me just say this, I hear people about the solicitation in the doorway. There are some merchants that would stay in their doorway and just say, hello, how you doing? Come in. Or something like that, very nice and pleasant. To me, that's not a problem. Versus the idea, you know, I'm trying to give you something.
Here's the sample, come in, let me.
Yeah, or just saying hello and people walk by.
Can I add, Mayor, can I add just something real quick? That the noise ordinance actually does specifically call out shouting for solicitation and peddling as an example of something that is a violation of the noise ordinance. So if you get up to that decibel level of, you know, 70 decibels, then you, you know, that can be a noise that can be regulated.
And one other thing, just for clarification, some people might think these citations are criminal citations. They're not.
They're not.
They're civil.
Civil.
But this, but this ordinance change does make it a misdemeanor and, you know, punishable as a misdemeanor, which means that $500 that if it's collected as a civil penalty, it would go to the school boards and not to the town by criminalizing it.
All right. Okay.
So you can get charged with a misdemeanor for violating the solicitation ordinance.
Okay. We're quickly approaching the end of the hour, but if anybody else would like to make any comments or.
You need to prove the manance before you.
Oh, yes. Because of the.
I just have one last comment. And this is, this would be as much for Assistant Chief. Isn't verbal assault a punishable crime?
Yes. But let me speak as a magistrate. A verbal assault, that's not me at all. Or I'm going to, you know, put you in the spotlight or something, that isn't a verbal assault.
Is that the threat of a physical act?
Yeah.
Okay, but, but give me your hand and hanging on to it, well, hanging on to it is, but requesting that is not.
Hanging on to the hand is an assault.
Is the assault.
Yes. But a request to give you my hand is not.
Correct.
I have one last comment, and that is, you know, what you're dealing with, and that is this, when somebody tells them off on the street, they have a tendency to turn to each other and speak interracial discrimination against that person. Call them a ill ability or a whitey or whatever. One person went so far as to say, you don't want to talk to me because I'm not white. You probably think I'm a racist, which I am, and your mother's a fucking whore.
Okay.
So if you want to know what you're dealing with, that's what you're dealing with. Attitudes in their mind at all times and they're hostile. They're a hostile organization fighting against city. It's not really fun or bear.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, and before you guys go, can you just tell me, as far as the draft that you have before you, is there any revisions that you need me to make or is the way it's drafted good for whenever you get to the next meeting?
Our sport's pleasure.
I think this is as legal as it can get.
Yeah. I'd say we bring it to the next meeting, bring it up for vote.
Right, exactly. And then if there are other measures that we need to take, whether it's be cameras or plainclothes patrol or whatever we need to do, that's, that's different. But this is as legal as, as we can do it under state statute.
Your current ordinance stops them doing it. Okay. All right, we got to move on. Okay, we, I'm going to, we've got to move on, okay? We'll talk later. Okay, before we adjourn, we need to.
Do we need to make a motion to that effect to bring it to the next meeting or general consensus?
General consensus.
I mean, we approved the meeting of the previous workshop.
Workshops, the minutes.
And I second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. Any other comments before we adjourn for the next meeting? Hearing none, I declare to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you for your comments.